Just do that. Okay, we should be recording.
All right. So, welcome. This is Mother's Day, so I hope that everyone has had a good Mother's Day. Apologize for having the meeting on Mother's Day, but timelines got into the way and I can explain later if you like. But anyway, so this is a special meeting. You have the agenda. So I would like someone to call the meeting to order. Call it to order, Cabot?
Yeah.
The meeting's called to order. Anyway, I'd like to have a motion to adopt this agenda.
So moved.
Who was first? Okay.
I think Tom was first and Mary Beth.
I was first.
Right behind her.
Okay, Tom was first and Mary Beth seconded. All of those in favor of adopting this agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Agenda adopted. First topic is open forum. The rules that we have applied previously still apply. Three minutes per speaker, 15 minutes total. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Yes, this is Greg Blank.
Okay. So he's not muted, that's good. And Greg, do you want to go on video?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers out there. I think you've already, Lynda, started to address my first question about why the meeting needs to be held at 6:00 on Mother's Day. If you can, explain that a little bit later, like you said, that would be fantastic.
Sure.
Beyond that, I just wanted to ask the question about why we're doing, why the open forum is at the beginning of this agenda, because it would seem to make more sense, since this is a special meeting and since other meetings have followed an agenda where open forum happens later in the meeting, it would seem to make more sense to me to be able to have an open forum and solicit member comments after some or all of your agenda items have been gone over. And you don't have to answer that now, I'm just throwing it out there. And I just.
Answer it as it comes. So I can talk about the timeline and I can also talk about the open forum. Let's talk about the open forum first. If you look at previous minutes, you see that it comes after the President's Report, the Treasurer's Report, the General Manager's Report. It comes before we get into any business. So we did this no differently in that regard. Now, if you want to talk about time sensitivity, I'm happy to do that. We're under a little bit of a time crunch to get our slate in by the 17th, because that's what the code requires. So I did not get the slate myself until May 4th. And I received that from Penny, along with a list of telling me which members were current on their assessments and which were not. Because you need to be a member in good standing to be a candidate. So I noted, as did the Nominating Committee, that there were several members that were not in good standing. So that creates a little bit of a dilemma. What do we do with that? So, we had our Nominations Committee meeting on May 6th, which was Thursday, and we decided that we needed to meet because there were decisions that we could not make unilaterally. So immediately, Thursday, I started calling board members to try to get their availability. The first availability that the board members had was today. And needed today because, as you will see later in the agenda, we want to address and notify the individuals who are in arrears, that they are in arrears, and try to give them an opportunity to cure. And then we have to get the slate out by the 17th. That's why we did what we did. Does that make sense?
It does, it does. And my only other comment about all of it was, you know, I've been talking about optics for a long time, and although the explanation makes sense, I think that the choice to have the meeting at 6:00 on Mother's Day precludes a lot of people's ability to attend the meeting, and maybe they can, you know, watch it in the coming days and they'll get that explanation. But you know, there's a lot of, I'll put it this way, I've seen a lot of negative discussion going around about the day and the time of the meeting. And I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that and understand that these are the kinds of things when we are going through situations as tenuous as we've been through with some of these things recently, that when things happen like this, the optics of it all definitely have a negative impact on the membership.
Well, appreciate your comment. I share to the best of my ability why we ended up here. It was either that or not. Should we vote not to allow these individuals to cure before May 17th, then it's not an issue. But if we are going to allow them as a board to cure, need to have some time for them to get the notice and then get the money in.
Okay.
Sometimes we are just where we are. And the good news is, and the good news is.
It probably wouldn't be any of our choice to be here on Mother's Day at 6 either, except we have business that needs to be conducted.
My family's downstairs right now having Mother's Day dinner, so I'm not.
My family's here too.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak during open forum? We've got a few more minutes. Okay.
I'll do open forum real quick. I just want to tell everybody, I can't get my camera on. I am here, but I can't get my camera on. I don't know what's going on with this machine.
We can hear you, okay, so that's good at least.
And I'm assuming you can hear us, okay? Can you see us, Jim?
I can see everybody except me.
Well, I don't. If we're ready, then I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, which is filling the Board of Trustees Secretary Officer duties.
So Lynda, when Cheryl said she was leaving, I did offer to fill that spot and asked her what would be required. She did go over with me. So I'm happy to do that these last couple months. I don't think necessarily I would want to do it, you know, for when new candidates come on board, but I said I would fill in for her if the board was okay with that.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that Mary Beth be the new secretary through the August election.
I'll second that.
Okay, first, Tim Wyble, second, Cabot Ray. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Moving on then to the next issue, we have the review of the candidate slate. So, as I mentioned to you a moment ago, we did get the candidate slate. We have 11 candidates. We have a few that are in arrears. And Penny, when she sent that out to me, defined arrears to be, how do I best describe it? If you are a member and you are wanting to be eligible to vote in the election, you have to be current through the month previous to the election, which is August. So that means you need to be paid through July to be able to vote in August. Applying that same criteria to our candidates, we had several who were not. And that criteria also includes fines, which are treated a little differently in the code.
Lynda, I'd like to make a motion to allow those folks some time to pay so they can remain on the ballot as candidates. So I'd like to make a motion to allow any candidates for the Board of Trustees until noon on May 17th to bring their assessments current and to pay any outstanding penalty or fine on their account and remain current until the vote in August in order to continue to be named as a candidate for the Board of Trustees.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Lynda, how will you contact these people that we're talking about?
Well, I intend to, I didn't know how the vote would go, but I intend to talk with Penny first thing in the morning and ask that she reach out and send them emails and let them know. And I want her to run the numbers again to make sure that in this interim time period, people haven't gotten their accounts up to date or paid their fines.
The only thing I would suggest, if you're going to do it, be an email that you ask for replies, that we know that.
Received and received, that's a good, yeah, yeah. Let me make a note of that.
Yeah. Lynda also.
Real quick, I just, I couldn't hear what Tim actually said. Could he say that again? And really hug that mic, Tim, you don't have a very strong voice. I just suggested that when the emails are sent out, that they ask for a reply, so that gives us an idea, or we know that they did receive the email request.
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I had a little trouble hearing you, Tim.
What about sending it louder?
I'll talk a little bit louder.
I did want to.
Did we also send the letter? It's not that many people, is it?
Uh, no.
Just to double up, I think that's a good idea, to make sure we do anything we can to get the word through. Let me ask you this, Lynda, because I know, we're talking about assessments, you know, up to date. Obviously, the monthly assessment, like the roads assessment, like, well, we're done with the dam assessment, pretty much. So what other categories fall under that, that would be a requirement of a candidate to be current of?
Oh, like I said, fines, Article 9 fines, there's language. Gosh, I'm trying to remember exactly where it is.
I think, Cabot, it would be the monthly assessments too, that you're referring to. Monthly assessment, dam assessment, road assessment.
All that stuff, that I was wondering beyond that, beyond those standard assessment fees.
I think the language says if they owe any money to Hideaway Hills at all, for any reason. Any financial obligation to the club is what it says, under Section 2, Member in Good Standing.
I have some, oh, the exact language. Let's see. So I think you're right, Mary Beth, and then Article 2, Section 2 talks about Article 9 and being required to be paid or be considered in default and therefore not in good standing. So I think that covers the, I guess, the landscape of what would need to be paid.
Cabot, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, just I didn't know beyond the standard, you know, fees, what that referred to as well. Thanks.
So did we have a first and second then? All right.
Yes.
And if, do we have any other discussion? If not, let's vote on the motion. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Nay. Motion carries. The next agenda item talks about, oh, the Code of Regulations and the Nominating Committee, and how we have done nominations in the past, and how we should probably do them in the future. I see that there are a number of folks from the Nominating Committee on tonight, so thank you for attending. But the Nominating Committee, the language, and I'll have to find it here. And yes, I do still use paper sometimes. For whatever reason, I do like it.
It's on page 18.
Okay, I was working my way there. Okay. So the Nominating Committee says that the committee shall nominate persons from eligible board members, various committees, and the membership at large. So the committee can select from a wide range of individuals. All nominees must be in good standing. The nomination so made shall be posted in a notice on the bulletin board of the lodge at least 90 days before the election. That's May 17th. So we will post it at the bulletin board on the lodge Monday. Not that anybody can see it, but we will also do an e-blast and post it on our club website. Anyway, such notice to be signed by a duly authorized representative of the Nominating Committee. Additional nominations may be made by petition with a minimum of 15 members' signatures, but no person shall be eligible for election whose name has not been posted at least 80 days before the election. So I've looked at that, and I've looked at that, and I've wondered and pondered why we do how we do. Because the Nominating Committee does some work, but, you know, we send out applications and people apply, nothing wrong with that. We did that this year, but I just don't know that it exactly follows what the Code of Regulation says. So let's give an example. If we were to follow what the Code of Regulations say for the Nominating Committee language, last year, the Nominating Committee didn't necessarily reach out and select me, but I applied. But really, what should have happened is the Nominating Committee should have selected me, and if I wasn't selected, then I could have gotten a petition and gotten 15 signatures. But we didn't do that, and we haven't done that. So we are not really following what our own code says. And I have, I did talk with outside counsel about it, because I was just kind of, I'm like, what does this really mean? And he pretty much said what I just told you. So we have a situation now where we've done our nominations, so to speak, the way that we voiced them, sent out applications, and it's just, it's open. I am not suggesting that we change that, but I do think that it is not in keeping with the code. So I would like a motion, if someone is willing to make it, to continue to follow the practice for this year and to begin to follow the language of the code in next year's election.
So in other words, you're saying that we're not going to touch that this year, which I think is fair, based on how close we're getting to the election? And I know, I went, I didn't do that, when I ran, I didn't go through that procedure. So I definitely think that, yeah, we leave it alone this year.
Excuse me, I'm not 100% clear on what you're saying, that the nomination, the Nominating Committee is not doing something that they should do, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying that we as a club are not doing, we're really not following the code. The code says, Nominating Committee reaches out and selects X number of people. Let's say it's five, let's say it's six. Then if more people, other than those that were selected, wish to apply, they can then apply within that window of 90 to 80 days. So they can say, hey, I'm going to get a petition, 15 signatures, and I'm going to be on the ballot. It's really a two-part process, and we've been treating it pretty much as a one-part process, is what I'm saying. It's, go ahead.
Lynda, are you asking for a motion then, that for this year, we allow candidates who didn't follow the code to go ahead and still run and have their name, and then starting next year, that we follow the code?
Yeah, kinda, I'm not saying that the candidates didn't follow it. I'm saying that the club really didn't follow the procedure that should have been followed, and we haven't been. So I'm just pointing out that there is a procedure that we should follow, that we haven't been following, but let's not change it now.
So you're asking for a motion effective next year, we start following the code?
Correct.
I'll make a motion starting.
So why would the Nominating Committee not accept somebody who would like to run for the board? I mean, that, we have a tough enough time getting people to run in the first place, and you want to go and make it more difficult to, for people to run?
I don't think that's what she's saying, because she's actually suggesting that we do what we have been doing, and whoever has applied is running. But she's trying to point out there's a discrepancy with what we're supposed to be doing versus given how it's worded in the code, that's all she's saying.
I, I'm going to give you a little bit of history on this.
Okay.
Several years ago, when none of the people that were on this board, or the board before, or the board before that, the Nominating Committee took it upon themselves to be judge and jury on this, and they got the people that they wanted nominated, and I don't know if you remember this at all, Creager, Jim Creager, but you might help me if I'm doing this wrong. And what was happening is people would turn their application, enter the resume into the Nominating Committee, and the Nominating Committee would refuse them. So this second section in there was brought forth, and I believe it was Bucky Childers that brought it forward and put in there that 10-day service. But the Nominating Committee, to me, and I'm reading the code evidently different than you are, and I've got it in front of me here, is supposed to solicit people. And they do not make a decision on, well, we want this one to run, but we don't want this one to run. That's a board decision. And that second paragraph was slipped in there, and this was several years ago, so to stop the Nominating Committee from selecting the people that did put in an application, and this actually happened, I remember this, it actually happened, the Nominating Committee was going through, and they say, well, yeah, we want Joe, but no, we don't want Tom to run. And then they would turn in just the ones that they wanted to run. Jim Creager, were you around then? Can you help me on this or not?
Yeah, that's consistent with my recollection as well. I wasn't on the board, I was on Management Committee when it happened. But yeah, there was some controversy regarding people who had given an application or were interested, and then they were not forwarded. So that is consistent with my memory.
So why is that second section in the code then, Jim?
I think he's saying, Lynda, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he's saying that the Nominating Board wouldn't let other people run. They picked who they wanted and wouldn't let other people run. And so it prohibits that from happening. So the language.
Everything's kind of chopped.
Can you hear Jim?
Yeah. Jim Creager, can you hear me? Because all of a sudden, you just froze.
Yeah, I can hear you. I mean, I said what I said, and then I muted myself again, but I can hear you just fine.
Oh, okay, so you're in agreement that this is the reason that second was put in there?
That's, that is my recollection, yeah, Jim, it is.
So the second, I'm sorry, somebody was speaking.
Well, I just, I'm asking Jim and Jim a question. The way it reads under Section 3 is, so the Nominating Committee shall nominate members for the Board of Trustees for the upcoming election. And then if other people want to run, they're allowed, they just have to get 15 signatures to be compliant with the code. And anybody can probably get 15 signatures. And they're allowed to run as long as the board says yes, correct? And they're in good standing.
I'm reading that different from you, Mary Beth. I'm reading that the Nominating Committee is a committee to basically look for applications and take them, and then the board makes the final decision on that, not the Nominating Committee. They don't throw out, they don't throw out applications themselves. Their job is to find people, and then the board's job is to accept the people or not.
I agree.
Okay, so what the language says is they're supposed to nominate members for the Board of Trustees to run, and that then they give those proposed members to the Board of Trustees, including the 15, the people that obtained 15 signatures, and then the board says, has some input on it. That's just, I think, what the language says. I understand what you're saying about the history.
Well, see, now, I disagree with you, I'm reading that the different way. There's nothing in there that says that the Nominating Committee has the authority to accept or unaccept members who turn in their reservation, or in their application.
No.
I guess it ain't broke, it's been going on real well for years and years and years, just the way it is. And what that, the, there was two reasons for that, and it was used here not too long ago by a board member that got on. But the one reason was, as I told you before, and the second reason was, if somebody wanted to get in, get their application in after they were done, and they thought, I don't know, I want to run for the board, then they have 10 days to do it. But I don't think it's fair for the Nominating Committee to say, yeah, you can run, and then no, and then they only have 10 days to get their signatures and get it in there. To me, it's working the way that the Code of Regulations read, just the way we're doing it. The Nominating Committee gets the members that want to run, and then anybody that changes their mind and decides they want to run afterwards. It's simply in there so that the Nominating Committee does not have the authority to just automatically throw somebody out.
I think I would like to make a suggestion. I think that we should have, we should get clarity from our outside counsel on this and let it be what it is for right now.
I agree with that, and I actually would like to, not necessarily tonight, but at some point, discuss how the Nominating Committee is determined and what their criteria is when they go out to select members to run, because I don't even know who's on the Nominating Committee to begin with. Number one, I don't know who selected them. I don't think the board had any say in that. And then last, I don't even know who they've selected yet.
Well, we have, we have 11 members on the slate, and like I said, we have several with outstanding, you know, outstanding issues regarding whether or not they're in good standing. If you'd like, I can give you, read off that list right now.
Lynda?
No, no, no.
Which members did the Nominating Committee recommend? They didn't recommend all 11 that are on the slate, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's my point. Who are the ones that they recommended?
So if it makes a difference, Patrick Connor was recommended, Chaz Cross, Linda Hiles, I mean, Linda Hodge, Tom Murphy, and Doug Parker.
So five, five members?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wondered, I did not know, you know, how many were on, were recommended and how many volunteered through resume.
And I wasn't distinguishing, because that's why we brought it here, because we weren't going to distinguish. But, so anyway.
I think, I agree with Tim that for transparency's sake, we need to know who these members are of this committee that made this recommendation of these five.
Sure.
And, I mean, and, I mean, I. And, I mean, and, uh, I mean, I, and that should be something that, uh, becomes a point of discussion down the road.
Okay, well, I can tell you who's on the nominating committee pursuant, okay, if you look at the code, uh, the president shall appoint from the members, two of whom shall not be members of the board, meaning three can be members of the board. I am on it because it says, uh, the president is chairman to nominate members of the Board of Trustees for the ensuing election.
Okay, okay.
So I'm on it, Annie's on it. I think we're the only two board members on it. Oh, Cheryl was on it, that's right, Cheryl was on it. So now only two. But then John Cook, uh, Jill Vink. And that's all with the, um, loss of Cheryl. So it's a five-member committee, and that's, um, what the, um, code calls for.
Yeah.
And I think you did, uh, you did announce that earlier in, several months ago, in a meeting, and we actually voted on it, who was on the nominating committee. So I know we'd cover a lot of ground, so it's probably hard to remember, but, uh, we did actually vote on that.
We vote? We voted on that in January. The one thing that we did not do is we did not have one report from this committee as to who they had, who they had selected, recruited, whatever you want to call it, until the, uh, April meeting. And there was a very, uh, Linda made a very, uh, just generic motion, or note, that they had their committee members, or they had their nominations, and then, and went no further than that. There was very little, well, it wasn't not very little, there was absolutely no communication.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
As the board, in a board meeting, uh, from January, well, from the February meeting through the March meeting, we heard no report on what they had done.
So, we, go, well, go ahead, Annie.
I was just gonna say, so Eric, Jim Krieger and I were on the committee last year, and we did not report back to the board on anything until the actual candidates all came in. So if that was supposed to be done, we didn't do it last year. If we had done it last year, I think we would have done it this year. It's, that, that is kind of, I guess, news to me, what you're calling out, Jim.
And I will tell you that we didn't have, um, any firm candidates until, until recently. So there wouldn't have been anything to report, Jim. Other than what we had reported earlier.
Well, I think we need to leave it alone, as you said, this year. And I don't think we need to make any kind of a decision on this. Uh, we've got a full year to make a decision on, uh, whether, whether the, the constitution or the code of regulations is what you say, or what you read in, read it, and what I read in it, which one is right or wrong.
Jim, I don't have a problem with that. I wanted to bring it forward, though. But I do want the board to acknowledge that they are good with the slate, uh, the full slate.
Which is what we should be doing right now, anyway, is voting on the full slate. However, I don't think we can vote on the full slate until, uh, after we find out if these, uh, ones that are not in good standing pay up, which means we'd have to do an e-vote on Monday to accept them, and then get it up. When I say Monday, I'm talking about the, the 17th. We just almost have to do an e-vote on that.
We're getting pretty tight, Jim, because if we wait, in order to meet, well, you know this, in order to meet the code requirement of May 17th, we've gotta get, well, that stupid, where we posted on the bulletin board that no one will see, but any, you know, an e-blast out. And we need to do that on the 17th. Now, I don't, I don't know how we do all of that on the 17th.
Well, you said by noon. I'm just saying that, how can we vote on, uh, these candidates unless we word it, word the motion that, assuming that, you know, we accept them as long as they're all current by the 17th? That's, that'd be the only way that we could vote on that tonight.
I think that can be, that should be worded that way, sure.
I do, too. Um, let's go over, let's, do you want to go over who the candidates are, a list? So you have that?
Yes, please. I think the members need to know.
All right. Jeff Barron is a candidate. Greg Blank is a candidate. Patrick Connor is a candidate. Chaz Cross is a candidate. Uh, Margaret Euler is a candidate. Jim Hiles is a candidate. Linda Hodge is a candidate. Eric Lapp is a candidate. Tom Murphy is a candidate. Doug Parker is a candidate. And Stephanie Wolf is a candidate.
Uh, do we have a motion on the table to originally, well, there was an original motion before we started this discussion that was not seconded? Do we have a mo, didn't somebody make a motion that we do this, the way you said before? Accept these people, uh, for this year, and then not, but not in the future? Because if there is, that should be rescinded, and I'll make a motion to do it the way I said it.
I don't think we ever got there, Jim.
Okay, fine, we don't have a secretary.
Mary Beth is probably tracking that, but I don't recall it ever to that point.
I don't know that we had a, a formal motion. Did someone make a formal motion on that?
I don't know if I did or not, at this point.
I honestly thought that Mary Beth did, and then either I or Jim interrupted from that point forward.
I think I said something, I think, Tim, I said, uh, like, I make a motion that we go keep the process the same for this year. It was about the process, not about accepting candidates.
Yeah, that's correct. But I guess what I'm saying, what Jim's saying is, because we want to continue to discuss the process or the method going forward, I really don't think we want to address that motion doing it the way we're doing it this year versus how it might go forward next year. I think we want to drop that till we can discuss it more. Does that sound?
I'm happy to rescind it.
Okay, thank you.
So in, in rescinding the, uh, motion, I believe we have to have a vote to accept the recension?
That's correct.
So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion is rescinded. Uh, let's have, uh, a new motion. Jim, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, uh, I will ma, make the motion that we will accept the 11 candidates, uh, for the, uh, as running for the board, with the exception that four, did you say four are delinquent? Yeah, I think you did. Four are not in good standing, that they be in good standing by the 17th of May.
Well, by.
I second that.
By noon, by noon on the 17th.
I, I'd like you to finish the motion, Jim, with by 12:00 noon on May 17th.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, then, uh, I make the motion that we accept the 11 candidates to be, to run for the board, with the exception of any candidate that is not current right now. Be current by noon on the 17th of May.
I second that.
And then what we will do is, on the 17th, we'll have a, uh, e-vote to accept the, the final slate. Now, uh, you guys are all gonna have to be jolly on the spot, because we'll need to get that, uh, e-vote done before the, um, folks leave from the office, and that's 6 o'clock. So it's gonna have to be out, voted on, and results back in, so they can get the e-blast out.
I'll tell you what might speed that up, too, Lynda, is if you would let the board know, uh, as these four become current, so that, uh, we know, I mean, you know, immediately at noon, we can, you don't even need to call for an e-vote, we can just, I, I, I e-vote that, uh, that they're, that the members are okay. In other words, what I guess I'm saying in the long run is just let us know where they stand as they come in, or at least let us know, like, on Thursday, or on Friday before the, uh, what's the 17th, is that a Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a Monday. It's the day before our next board meeting.
And the office is.
You know, you can let us know like, like on Friday, that they are in there. Or Thursday, I guess, is the last day the office is open.
I think if, if that's possible, if, if Lynda knows that, let's say, three out of the four are current, she could at least give us a heads up on that.
Sure.
If all four of them are current, then, then we're good.
Mike can send the e-vote out right away, then, yep.
Yep.
So are we voting then on this motion?
We have a second, don't we? Didn't?
Cabot seconded it.
Okay, um, can you read, can you read back the motion? I mean, we all know the general gist of it, but... Mary Beth, or?
Oh, Jim's, Jim's made a motion that we accept the 11 candidates as long as they're all in good standing by May, uh, May 17th at noon. And it's been seconded.
Okay. All, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Hey, Lynda, is there a standardized form that people need to use to collect this, 15 signatures?
You know, I don't know.
They just get a sheet of paper and turn them in?
Uh, it could be as simple as, I support, um, Tom Matthews running for, to be a candidate for the board and in this election, I suppose.
Lynda, what was that question Tom said?
Tom wanted to know if there is a form for the petition, and I said that I was not aware of one. But that it could be as simple as, you know, I, Tom Matthews, am running for the board 2021, um, and your signature represents support, whatever. And then people sign their names, 15 people. Or there could be one made out. But that's not for right this moment. Okay. So, moving, I think we're, we're done, right? Okay. And.
Jim, you all right?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, next agenda item is vacancy on the board. As you know, uh, Cheryl Burnside, um, has, they sold her, she and Mike, so they are, uh, no longer members of Hideaway Hills. Sorry to see them go, obviously, but, um, so, there is a vacancy on the board that will be a vacancy until August.
I spoke with, uh, with, or I emailed Jim Krieger. Jim Krieger's the next one on the list as far as candidates, um, from, uh, from the last election that was available. And it's been our, kind of our tradition in the past to, uh, bring on the candidate that was next on the list as far as amount of votes. Jim did share with me that, uh, he would not be interested in taking that spot. Uh, the next person after that would be Jeff Barron. I'd like to nominate Jeff Barron to be the next board member, uh, on our Board of Trustees.
So you are, um, is your motion to fill the vacancy then with Jeff Barron?
If I didn't say that correctly, then yes, that's, I'd like, I'd make a motion to fill the vacancy with Jeff Barron as the next person in line as far as amount of votes in the last election.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Jim? Any discussion on that?
I'll just say that that hasn't always been the case. In fact, the last two years, we've had a vacancy happen on the board, and we didn't fill it because we were just within, like, right now, just a few months of the next election. And the, the term would really only be for three months until the election. And so my mind was like, why, why won't we just let the membership decide who fills that seat?
Again, appreciate that, Annie. But in the past, the last two times that's happened, we have not had anybody extra running for the board at that point. We, we filled the bullet, we filled the amount of positions that we're at, because that's all the people that ran. Now we have some extra candidates, and we have somebody who is certainly willing to serve on our board. And we've got three months of service left with a lot of decisions to make. I can't see why anybody would not want to bring somebody on who's willing to serve and volunteer our community.
I agree with Annie. I mean, with three months left, for them to come up to speed with all the history that's been through the last year, it just, I say, let it play itself out. If you select someone, I feel like it gives them an advantage in the election, too. They're already on the board, their name's out there. Doesn't make sense to me.
No, I get you.
In addition, in addition to that, um, you know, it always, it hasn't always been historical. They took the next person in line. I think, Eric, when you were appointed, Stan Durham was the next person in line. And you got appointed before Stan Durham. But I think also, if we were gonna fill it, we should fill it with someone with experience who could help us in those last few months, as opposed to, you know, someone who, it's nothing against Jeff Barron, but he's never been a board member. And as we all know now that we're on the board, it takes a long time to get up to speed and learn what's really going on. And if he was one of the other people that it's, that's running as a candidate, who had served on the board before, it'd make a whole lot more sense to me to fill that than leaving it open for two more months. Yeah, I just don't see it being that helpful.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tim.
I, I discussed this with Lynda previously, and I, I don't think it's mandatory for us to fill that slot for the remainder of the, the, uh, two or three months that are left. So it's not, it's not necessary that we actually do it.
When Dennis Aubrey passed, we did not, uh, sadly, when he passed, we did not, uh, fill his position. Is that correct? And what about?
No, that is not correct. I was, I was, I filled his position.
At the election.
At the election.
At the election, you did.
No, I'm at, at the election, that's correct.
The remainder of the term, is what I'm talking about, the remainder of his term. And, uh, has that ever, I mean, I know there's a tradition here, but it's kind of like it's, there's been a couple of times, I don't know, in the last five years where that's happened, right?
How many months did we go after, uh, uh, Mr. Aubrey passed away before the election? How many, is that just a couple of months also?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I can't be 100% sure, but I think it was a couple or three months. It wasn't a, a long time.
And again, in the case with Mr. Aubrey, there was not another candidate that had run for the board the previous year to fill that spot. We now have somebody that has run for the board, wants to work on, with our committee, wants to go and volunteer for the community. I don't see how, it could be a problem. And in the case where, thank you, Mary Beth, for bringing that up, uh, if I remember it correctly, it was, uh, Mark Holt hadn't had resigned, and Lynda was next in line, and she took Mark Holt's spot. And then when it came to, uh, Donna Stage, I believe, is who resigned. And Stan Durham had never been to a single meeting before. I had been to the previous six, I'd been volunteering on all types of committees. And so the board chose to go and put me on the board at that point because I made good sense. So I understand that it's not always, that's always, not always been the tradition. But in this case, we have somebody who wants to go on to serve our community, and he's next in line based on the amount of votes. I don't see why, it just makes good sense.
He is ru, he is running, correct? He is, yeah, he was on there, he's on the list for, to run.
So the people could decide with the next election to put him on. The language is, um, may fill. It's not mandatory. The vacancy doesn't have to be filled. As long as.
We keep hearing from our board, let the people decide, let the people decide, let the people decide. Why would we not let the people decide?
Because this is an interim, uh, commitment. And I'm gonna go back in history here. And in the predominant cases that this has happened in the last several years, and I'm going back 10, maybe 15 years, that the next in line. going back 10, maybe 15 years, that the next in line has been appointed. As we go back in time, in most of the time, now, there's been a couple of times that, like you said, that they didn't fill, or in Eric's case, we thought that he knew more about what was going on, and so we filled it with him. But the proponent of the times that this has happened, we have filled the board to keep the board at the nine that we're supposed to be.
Well, I think, Jim, I think there's times when you haven't. Ginger told me she's been secretary and treasurer at the same time before because you didn't fill the board when she was on there.
Was there anybody in line? That's, I keep going back.
Well, I don't know, but.
I don't know that, I understand your argument, Eric. We're, we're kind of going circular here. Do we have any new comments to make? New thoughts? If not, let's go ahead and address the motion with a vote. The motion was?
There has not been a motion yet, Lynda.
I thought there was.
I made a motion, Jim.
Yeah, Eric made the motion, and Jim, you seconded it.
Yeah, you're correct, that's right, that's right.
So, Mary Beth, could you read that motion, please?
Eric made a motion to have Jeff Barron fill the empty seat on the board until the election, and Jim, Jim Lloyd seconded that motion.
Okay. So that's the motion on the, on the floor. Let's go ahead and take a vote. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Who do we have as aye? We have?
One.
Jim, Eric, anyone else? All of those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
So the nays are?
I said nay, Annie said nay.
Mary Beth, Tom, Tim?
And Cabot.
The nays carry. Well, I think that's it for this meeting. We have a lot to do this week. I will be in touch with you on what's happening with our nominees and keep you apprised. I will also talk with Penny tomorrow, ask her to get out an email with return receipt, and we can also send out letters. So we'll get that done tomorrow, so.
Would it be possible to also text them, just so that we've covered the bases?
If we, if we have their phone number and it's accurate, we could, I just?
Shouldn't be on the resume, shouldn't it?
I'll have to check, it could be. It may vary.
It, it's going to be in the directory.
You know, Jim, Jim will try, okay? And if it's not accurate number, then we're not going to be able to do it. But, anyway, we will do that, we'll keep you apprised, and thank you for your attention. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Tim Wivel.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay. Annie? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you for your participation.
Mary Beth, we adjourned at 6:55 PM.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your evening.
Good night.